April 28th, 2021, meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Call.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Dr. Vogt? Mrs. Willis?
Mrs. Willis will be absent.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Here. We will now, we set the pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, Republic for which it stands, one nation, nation, under God, under God, indivisible, in liberty, liberty, and justice for all.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper and adequate electronic notice has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and the New Jersey Administrative Code Title V, Chapter 39, Section 1.5 Notice of the Remote Public Meeting as required by law.
Thank you. Reiterating of the approval of the previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2021.
All moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Of shame.
Dr. Vogt? Aenead, I can't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance 8-21 entitled An Ordnance Amending Chapters 5 and 78 of the Code of the City of Long Branch and Prescribing the Duties of the Director and the Public Safety. This ordinance was introduced on April 14th, 2021. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please dial star nine on your phone and a representative will call you by your last three digits of your phone number. When you are called upon, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
COVID. Caller whose phone number ends in 350. Go ahead.
Yeah, Ernest McGonagall, born in Long Branch, I live at 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida, and I'm looking to move back. Public Safety Director, I believe you're talking about the contract, correct?
No.
You're talking about reinstituting the program?
I don't understand what you mean by program. The ordinance eliminates the police chief's position.
I'm sorry. Can you just explain it simply?
The ordinance eliminates the position of police chief and essentially takes the city ordinance back to the, a public safety director who will be in charge of the day-to-day operations of the police department.
Okay. All right. So let's just say finally, that's a good thing. And I want to say that just so everyone knows, when Schneider appointed Public Safety Director Roebuck to the chief position, prior to taking the leave of absence as a captain, he was only a captain for six months and you have to be ingrate for a year. And there were three or four other captains with much more experience than Roebuck who were passed over for some reason. I don't know if it's a favor or what it was, but that's what gave us the tyrannical reign of Public Safety Director and Police Chief Jason Roebuck, also known as Jason Scott, also known as Chief J-Ro. So, you know, he's got about five names on Facebook and all around. But look, he's gone, thankfully. Let's hope the police department can heal. However, I think with this, the fact that you're going back to the way it was for 40 odd years is perfect, but I'm not sure if you're going to keep the exact same purview of the Public Safety Director because I believe the last one before you had a chief was that they were also the head of the fire department, OEM, and the day-to-day of the police department.
Correct.
So is that what you're going back to?
Yes, sir. While the Public Safety Director has always been the, in charge of the fire department, so Director Saldiva is currently in charge of the fire department. So we're not changing that. It's just that before Director Saldiva was appointed, technically the Public Safety Director was the business administrator. So the civilian Public Safety Director will in fact be in charge of police and fire.
Good. Okay. So I get it. So prior to this, it was Roebuck as the police chief and it was former Eaton Town Police Chief, Long Branch City Business Administrator Jackson as the Public Safety Director.
Correct.
But now you're, now you're going back to the previous status, just the way it was, which will make this deputy chief from Newark and some other location as Public Safety Director in New Jersey, I think, too. And now he's under contract for whatever. I think the contract said 160,000 and he will be day-to-day operations over the, I think you have three cap, four captains now, or did you just lose another one?
Three.
You lost another one. Okay. Okay. Am I allowed to ask if you're gonna have another captain or gonna see if the Public Safety Director can do it with three?
It's not part of this ordinance. Right now, there's only three.
I'm sorry?
It's not part of, it's not part of this ordinance and it's, it's, and right now there is only three and we really can't talk about personal matters like that.
I get it. I understand. Okay. So, and I would hope that, that this Public Safety Director will be more receptive to allowing the public to have access to the commander of the Internal Affairs Division, which now I think it's Captain Joshua Bard. And it's very, get through to him. And it's actually a pleasure and a very professional to get through to the Public Safety Director, but not to the, not to the internal affairs person. And that's a big problem. So I'm hoping in his day-to-day operations, I'm sure he's listening, that he'll make sure that internal affairs in Long Branch is readily available to answer the phone and they follow the Attorney General Guidelines that they're to take a complaint. And Captain Bard has to stop telling people that if you make a complaint about the Long Branch Police, he's going to charge you with some criminal code of filing a police report. So, yeah, yeah, that's right. You're welcome.
Do we have anybody else, Will?
No other hands raised, sir.
With that, I need a motion to close.
All moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance 8-21 entitled Ordnance Amending Chapter 5 and 78 of the Code of the City of Long Branch and Prescribing the Duties of the Director and Public Safety. I need a motion to adopt on the third and the final reading and advertise according to law.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction, there's none. Before I open up the public portion, Resolution 86-21, resolution to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute your word contract and for engineering and service for the safe routes to the school project is added on to today's agenda. With that, the public participation portion. For all general comments, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. If any member of the public has any comments to make, please dial star nine on your phone and a representative will call you by your last three digits of your phone number. When you are called upon, state your name, address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Caller whose phone number ends in 350. Go ahead.
Yeah, Ernest McGonagall, born 301 Second Avenue. I live at 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435. Are we commenting on this ordinance or is this the public participation?
This is the public participation, Mr. McGonagall.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I'd like to start off with talking about Operation Bidrig through 2000, through 2018 or 19 and how the law firm of Ansel Graham Aaron represented Long Branch and Asbury Park and how Asbury Park, city manager, city mayor, council members all went to federal prison and how and why James Aaron and Ansel Graham Aaron still remain the city lawyers for Asbury and yet you fired them when Mayor Pallone won the election and was sworn in on the 18th. So what I'm trying to get at here is this, even though Ansel Graham Aaron has gone from Long Branch, he's still, with his attorneys, still have a lot to do with Long Branch, with the development, with the law cases. When the police are in crime and are sued, often you get Ansel representing them, Richard Ansel, Uliano, always representing the criminal cops, always getting them off with plea deals. So my point is, since you're now going back to a public safety director, I'd like to say that I don't think that this new lawyer, this firm, Mr. Renone, is qualified or has got the background to realize just what a crime, corruption, and nepotism city Long Branch is. Just like Asbury, they're both the same. They were devastated by Solomon Dweck and Operation Bidrig where they took over the shore, they put these high-density millionaire billionaire mansions in tax-free, and it was all done on criminal bribes. Schneider, on the court record of Solomon Dweck's testimony, said that Mayor Schneider and James Aaron, the city lawyer, accepted a bribe, a bribe at the Deal Country Club. And then when they found out about it and everybody else, they called Dweck and met at Schneider's office and gave the money back. But he said, you know what? You're still going to give me that spot zone on Brighton and Ocean where you built what you built. You know that that's how that was done. All done illegally, like all the things you're doing in Long Branch, all these horrible mansions and millionaire tax-free religious places and homes. I mean, who can stop it? The poor, the poor homeowners. It's just crime and the criminal cops. And now you let this fireman off, Todd Fighter, who stole all the equipment and you got him a two-thirds disability pension. He claims, oh, I didn't feel good from 9/11. He's been stealing from the fire department for 20 years and your police department got him off with the two-thirds pension, tax-free. Todd Fighter, Long Branch paid fireman. You should be ashamed of yourself. All those firemen stealing stuff, stealing time. The cops stealing time, disconnecting GPSs, sexually assaulting other police's children. What more could go wrong in Long Branch that your lawyer won't do anything about? These cops and firemen in Long Branch. You should fire them all and start fresh. Get good, new people, honest people. And that includes a city lawyer. Do I have any time left?
One minute and 16 seconds, sir.
Thank you. I also want to say, I hope that this city, Ms. Moss, the permanent city clerk, she's courteous, professional, she's reachable, and, and I think she's the one. That's my opinion for clerk. And I think, other than that, I'd like to say, I hope that all the charges of pedophilia, priests, teachers, sex offense, you know, cops with sex offenses in Long Branch, that somehow we deal with it all. Because the three superintendents for a lot of it, the Long Branch and the two Asbury, they're all going to King University after they left those schools with pedophiles, sex offenders, and it's horrible. They should be held accountable, not walk away to half a million dollar jobs. That's what's wrong with Monmouth County and that's what's wrong with New Jersey. These superintendents should be held accountable. And look at what's in the paper about this Neptune principle. Look what he did in Atlantic City. Really?
Mr. McGonagall, thank you for your time, sir. Thank you for your time.
Caller whose phone number ends in 498. Go ahead. You may have to unmute yourself dialing star six.
Hi, Susan Ring, Second Avenue, Long Branch, New Jersey. I'm calling because this is my first time, so forgive me, this little news to me. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. I'm calling to see that news and I want to know why the road heading north has not been unblocked and open to public for driving through. It's been a problem all summer long. Cars just drop and come and go and in the wrong direction, letting cars, people in and out. That's a road. It's a public road and it's been blocked off. Will that become open again? And then my other questions are, they are placing planters on the street and they are blocking the sidewalk outside of their restaurants so that people cannot walk through. And as an individual who walks dogs, I'm not allowed to walk on the boardwalk. And it's a street, so I'm not walking in the street. So are they going to be required to clear that area out and open it up? And that would be all I have.
John, you're on mute, John. John, you're on mute.
George, can you address the issue with the roads with the safety? But as far as the planters, if you're, I'm sorry if you're, I didn't get your name, but if you're saying the planters, the boardwalk, that's not appropriate. Am I correct, George and Director?
I believe she's talking about planters that are in the roadway.
There's in the road.
Correct. And ma'am, there's a couple of things, just to let you know, that the, the closure of the roadway is, was not the decision of the wave. In fact, they agree with you that the roadway should be open. According to our traffic lieutenant, who I let you know, tried to reach out to you today to talk about some of your concerns, you know, to get them done offline. The roadway, we inherited when the new administration came in and I know there were great intentions by the designer of Pure Village Phase 3, but that roadway is quite frankly, in our opinion, a hazard. The design of it causes it to go right between the hotel, the hotel's restaurant area and the boardwalk. It is a pedestrian nightmare, for lack of a better way of phrasing it. It is extremely dangerous and it's just out of really our concern that to allow vehicles to travel through that area would, would be a, just an absolute accident waiting to happen with pedestrians. As far as the items and tables that are extended out from the hotel in the proper area of dining, that's part of our temporary dining, outdoor permits that we've done under COVID. If you go throughout the city, you'll see that restaurants are having tables set up in areas that they never did before. The wave, just like all of our other restaurants are trying to survive and we've extended their usable portions of their property. In fact, there were some areas of the city where we've closed off roadways. You'll see that in Pure Village on Centennial Drive, extended Jersey barriers so that pedestrian traffic walk on the edge of the roadway to give more dining space for the restaurants there in Pure Village. Also, we shut down Brayton Avenue. We're going to begin that again in May so that our restaurants can expand their dining area. So in this instance, the things that you, that I know you're concerned with are really the decisions of the city to help our business community and quite frankly, to keep that roadway closed is strictly out of a concern for pedestrian safety. It's our collective opinion that it's just by design and by its practical use, it's just not, it's not appropriate for vehicular traffic to go northbound. We do have southbound open and I will tell you that I have my own concerns. Once all those shops underneath the lofts start opening it up and we have shoppers trying to cross that roadway as well and we'll, we'll adjust and adapt to that as time goes on.
I'm sorry. So if it was a road for all these years, why was it allowed to be built knowing that the restaurants and everything were going to be there and it be a safety issue? That was a two-way road right there. And instead they put the northbound side on the east coast of the hotel and the southbound side on the west coast.
All right.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments, Mrs. Ring. Thank you.
And if I can respond briefly, Council President, I agree 100% with your observation that hotel is an island between two roadways. I, I can't speak for the designer, the planner that came up with that scheme. I'm sure on paper it looked very attractive, but you know, in practical application, it is a poor, poor design that we're trying to make the best of.
And if I could add, if I could add, Mr. Jackson, you know, some of us were on council at the time and you articulated exactly, in other words, on paper it looked okay, but the reality is even, even on paper, there were concerns from some members of council, including myself, that, that, you know, questioned exactly what turned out to be a reality here. And so, yeah, once we, we saw the situation, I, I agree with you 100%. As does, I think, all of council, but I don't want to speak for them, but.
Thank you, Mayor. Will?
Caller whose phone number ends in 198. Go ahead.
Mr. IT man, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, sir.
Requesting one minute notification. Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. I took note this evening of Resolution 77, another clerk. Councilwoman Selly, at the last council meeting.
Mr. Lapore, you guys asked me the questions. Ask me the question, Mr. Lapore.
I'm not asking a question. I'm making a statement.
Okay, I apologize.
Miss Selly, you stated that the last clerk brought the clerk's office into the 21st century. Miss Selly, that was most insulting. The team of Kathy Schmelz, Debbie Talarico, and Mary Moss of the former clerk's office, ran an Excalibur clerk's office, probably the best in the state. If anyone needs to be brought into the 21st century, Miss Selly, it's you. So now it appears acting clerk Mary Moss has now been passed over twice, and I emphasize twice. I looked at the background of your new hire and your new hire is that of a deputy clerk experience, not of a clerk, but of deputy clerk experience. Let this be an additional warning to all city employees when looking at Mary Moss. Observe the two knives in her back that currently exist after this evening. You see, city employees, not only can you get stabbed in the back once, but the Pallone administration is capable of stabbing you in the back twice. Our continued condolences to acting clerk Ms. Mary Moss, who rightfully and has the qualifications to be the city clerk. Item number two, the Church Street School Project of Douglas Jamal. We saw at the last council meeting how the Transit Village ordinance developer Jamal was given a parking abatement, the new type of abatement by the Pallone team to gift developers in addition to tax abatements, putting further burdens on the taxpayers to pay for the developer deficiency in parking. But if that wasn't enough with developer Jamal, there is the Jamal Church Street School Project. There currently exist numerous violations of the zoning board resolution of approval, issues concerning fencing, location of air conditioning units, the addition of numerous doors and windows, non-compliance with the requirements of the New Jersey Historic Trust. The Zonings Board Officers Enforcement Agency is the zoning officer and to date, no violation has been issued by the zoning officer, the enforcement agent for the zoning board. And why? Letters have been written, calls have been made about developer Jamal's non-compliance and nothing is being done. What's the quid pro quo on the Jamal project as the Pallone team continues representing the developers and the residents getting burned by this city? Item number three, Church of the President's Museum. The most recent Monmouth County Historical Commission meetings displayed serious issues with the board of the Church of the President's Museum, terming the board having quote problematic end quote issues outside the norm of normal historical funding. The County Historical Commission wanted independent evaluations by qualified architects. The County Historical Commission wanted quarterly updates on the work. The County Historical Commission wanted to inspect the Church of the President's. None of the above were done by the board. Accountability was nonexistent. The board opted out. What's worse, the board refused the grant from the County Historical Commission and received $250,000 in a line item from the state. Where is the fiscal accountability with the state of New Jersey? The County Historical Commission is aware that the Dinkelspells had aggregated all lots prior to the museum land being put on the national registry. It's a shame Edgar and Florence Dinkelspell aren't with us today to defend their mission. The County Historical Commission has now realized the need for a federal audit of the Church of the President's Museum. How much time left, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Lapore, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Lapore.
Mr. Ray Allen?
Yes, sir.
Could you please, could you please correct, just, just for the record, correct for Mr. Lapore that an abatement was not given at either the Chelsea Avenue project that he's referring to, Orchard Street?
Correct. And by the way, the Transit Development District ordinance change had no effect on those approvals that were already granted. They were granted under the prior ordinance. So I'm not quite sure this issue of parking deck that Mr. Lapore has raised now on a number of occasions had nothing to do with the Transportation Development District Ordinance Amendment and nor has the city entered into any agreement with regards to that.
Thank you, Mr. Renone.
No other hands raised, sir.
All right. Before I close, oh, Madam Clerk, do you have, do you have or you received any public comment, electronic mail or written letters?
Yes, sir. By electronic email, I request a five-minute notification. This is from Ms. Laura Tarlow. She's a resident of Long Branch. She asked item one, please ask council to address the awareness of the bike gang of the kids on the beachfront and proposed solution such as increased police patrol to stop the kids on bikes from harassing pedestrians in a dangerous and harmful way. One would think this is critical, not only One would think this is critical not only to the safety of the citizens of Long Branch, but also for protection of our major income revenue source, example beaches. And yes, let's not get a bad reputation attributed to this issue. As you may already know, a change.org petition is in process. Item number two, Resolution 7721, Jackson Woods. Council President, I believe that's Resolution 80-21, but she states, please add a clear copy of the description of services to be provided to Jackson Woods. The current list is not only small, but when enlarged, all of the text is blurred. If not possible in the current format, please, for transparency, create a typed list of services provided under the resolution. And item number three, city clerk resolution. It appears from LinkedIn that Ms. Capone is a highly experienced city clerk. Hopefully, when presenting this resolution, council president makes this very clear to the public. Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I close the public participation portion, I know there's a few concerns out there with the kids on the bikes. Someone turn it over to our director, Mr. Saldeira. He's been addressing this issue, and I'm going to turn it over to him, Mrs. Saldeira.
Council President, I think that just procedurally, we probably have to close the public portion first by motion and then do it.
All right. Thank you. With that, I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
Show move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you. And before we move on, I'm going to turn it over to our director, Saldeira. Mr. Director? You're muted, Mr. Saldeira. You're muted.
All right. Sorry about that, Council. President, good evening to everyone. Good evening to our community out there that's concerned about the situation that's taking place right now. I am going to address it in the following, and it's a public safety message to everyone in our community. Long Branch takes this issue of cyclist safety very serious and is concerned about the increase in incidence of so-called rideouts by cyclists who operate their bicycles in an aggressive and unsafe manner against traffic, whether pedestrian or vehicle. This is a difficult issue because we want to make sure that anyone that commits an assault is apprehended, but at the same time, not inhibit legit cyclist activity at the time when a pandemic limits recreational opportunities for our residents, particularly our young and our youth. On Saturday, April 24th, an incident occurred with a group of aggressive cyclists that is now under investigation by the police department. Under this incident, another cyclist was seriously injured. There have been other incidents in Long Branch involving young teenagers, adults who have used their bicycles to force pedestrian, bikers, cars, and walkers off the roadway. This is a problem nationwide, where these young cyclists obstruct traffic or play chicken with people, forcing them off the road and roadways. This trend is growing throughout the country and needs attention before riders or pedestrians suffer injuries. We want to stop these rideouts and turn these kids around to a more positive behavior. We are trying to find ways to provide productive opportunities for young cyclists such as bicycle rodeos, educational programs that encourage bike safety, like wearing helmets and paying careful attention to the rules of the roadway. The police department will work with the mayor and council, as well as the community groups, to see how we can better implement a cycling program in Long Branch that prevents assaults and encourages positive cycling activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. We can take a list of resolutions and a consent agenda? Need a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt? Doctor Sully?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. Applications or none? Miscellaneous business for the good of the order? Councilman Dangler?
Thank you, Council President. As I try to do every, at the end of every council meeting, I hope everyone now has gotten their, or are trying to get their vaccinations for the COVID-19. If you haven't, please look on the city website. There are other avenues to help everyone get the vaccines that want them, and it is important that we do so. But even when you get your vaccine, we still need to wear our mask until further notice in regards to health issues and how to protect ourselves. So please, don't relax just because you have your vaccine. Please, please, please mask up. The second thing, I believe we will not meet before Mother's Day. I could be wrong. I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I'd like to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Councilman Dangler. Councilwoman Vogt?
Can you hear me? I know where my microphone is.
Yeah, we can hear you. You got to get close to it, but we can hear you.
Okay. So I'd like to just do kudos to Superintendent Rodriguez, the Long Branch School District, and the Board of Education, particularly for the strategic planning process that they are going through. I'm participating in it as well as about maybe 25 or 30 other people. They have an extraordinary facilitator for the whole process, very experienced, very good at leading the group, a whole lot of well-rounded input from all segments of our community. And yeah, I think it will result in a really very innovative and energetic and ambitious plan for our school district and the expectations for our graduates. So just kudos to them for taking this on. It's the first time it's been done in 10 years. So kudos for taking it on and for the company that they have contracts with to do and for the way that they're managing the process. I think it's excellent. With that, best to, for the next two weeks to everyone, and we'll be back again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vogt. Councilwoman Sully?
As I always say, wear your mask and social distance, and don't forget to wash your hands. And thank you, Billy, for remembering Mother's Day, and happy Mother's Day to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sully. Mayor Pallone?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Yeah, I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day if we see you, don't see you before the next meeting. But in any event, I just wanted to say two things. We continue to vaccinate residents with our COVID-19 vaccination site. Please call on Wednesdays between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. to get registered and then vaccinated. All of us know, you know, there's a lot more, many more sites have opened nationwide as well as locally here. But again, it has slowed down here in Long Branch, so the turnaround time is relatively quick. So let me just give you that number again. It's 732-571-5694, 732-571-5694. That's Wednesdays between 5:00 and 8:00 to call to get registered and then vaccinated. And the last thing I wanted to let you know is our summer concert series is now out on social media and our website. Please be aware that we will be following all of the governor's executive orders to ensure the safety of our residents. You know, I think we're all looking forward to having our concerts back this summer, so we'll all cross our fingers, and, you know, I think we're all excited about that. With that, I just want to thank everyone for joining in this evening, and have a great week, and mothers have a great Mother's Day.
Thank you, Mayor Pallone. And I want to thank everybody that called in tonight. Always appreciated. And I want to send out a big thanks for, this weekend I had a little project over Jackson with the city park, and I want to send a big thanks out to everybody that came and helped clean the park, and a special thanks to the Monmouth University students that gave up the Saturday mornings to come out and work with me over there, and they were a great help. And I want to thank Kathy Bucken for organizing all that. And with that, I want to wish also everybody a happy Mother's Day and a good night. I need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Good night.